This is the regular meeting of Mason City City Council, July 5th, 2011 at 7:00 PM. Just to note that you can find the packet at home if you go to masoncity.net. On the top right-hand corner it says "Your Government," and then you scroll down and it says "Mayor/Council," and then you have there two packets, and that's everything that we have here right in front of us. Well, the record reflects that Mr. Nelson, Mr. Hickey, Mr. Marsters, Mr. Tornquist, and Mr. Weaver are present. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
There a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, well, first, item of business is a presentation from the North Iowa Fair Board and Mason City Youth Hockey. I believe we have, yeah, Mr. Higgins and Dr. Mark.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lookmire, esteemed City Council members, City Administrator Trout, Deputy City Clerk Black, city staff, audience members, and residents watching this broadcast. I am Dennis Higgins, and I'm here representing the North Iowa Fair Association as President of the Association's Board of Directors. Directors Daryl Johnson, Lance Seifkin, and Joey Van Zommeren are also present with me tonight. Also with me tonight is Dr. Jeff Cornick, representing the Mason City Youth Hockey Organization. Over the past few months, the North Iowa Fair Association has been working with you to resolve the issue of our water and sewer utility charges. These charges were incurred since changes were made in the water rates and have not been included in our budgeting process. With your approval, the penalties on the past due balance were set aside. We installed individual water meters to bring the water charges in line with actual usage. We then proposed a payment plan that would resolve the past due balance with regular payments over the next 30 months, along with paying the current monthly charges. You as a council approved the payment plan, so it would give us additional time to improve our financial picture. Tonight, I'm pleased to tell you that just over three months into the payment plan, I am bringing the City Administrator Trout to check for $19,580.38 to pay the entire balance due on the charges. This payment is the result of the combined efforts of the Kenny Lindstrom Foundation, Mason City Youth Hockey, and the North Iowa Fair Association. A grant of $10,000 from the Kenny Lindstrom Foundation to Mason City Youth Hockey, along with additional funds from both Mason City Youth Hockey and the North Iowa Fair Association, brings this matter to a close. Speaking for the Fair Association, we look forward to a long-term relationship with Mason City Youth Hockey as a tenant during the hockey and figure skating season. A new chapter begins this September with the Mason City Bulls hockey team arrival at the North Iowa Recreational Arena. We welcome them to Mason City and wish the team and its owners continued success. I hope the residents of Saragoya County welcome them as well. This will benefit our community as it provides an additional entertainment value, along with the economic impact that results from the visiting hockey teams, fans, and local spectators drawn to Mason City for these hockey games. This addition to the quality hockey and skating programs that have been a tradition in Mason City benefit us all. The North Iowa Fair Association continues to accommodate our traditional clients and welcome new users while addressing financial issues from the past. A new sponsorship program has had great success in its early stages. This will allow the Association to improve facilities and services, and do so in a more efficient and customer-friendly manner. As we prepare for the 2011 North Iowa Fair that gets underway in just two short weeks, the Board of Directors and the Fair volunteers are making efforts to offer a fair that reflects the accomplishment of people of all ages in Saragoya County, while making a responsible effort to keep the costs of producing the fair under control. Fairs are experiencing increasing challenges, and we are working to adapt to changes brought on by the recent economy, as well as the varied interests of the people of the area, and the time constraints on our volunteers as they work to make the fair a success. The Fairgrounds facility is for the annual fair, but our efforts are also geared towards maintaining it as an event center for North Iowa during the other 51 weeks of the year. From wedding receptions, to horse shows, to the Pyrotechnics Guild International Convention, to visits by presidential candidates and at least one president of the United States, the North Iowa Fairgrounds facility continues to be a multifaceted destination for visitors, business, and recreation that impacts the economy and quality of life for residents of Mason City, Saragoya County, and beyond. We recently made arrangements for the River City Remote Control Airplane Group to locate at the Fairgrounds, and work is just getting underway on a new motocross track to promote that sport locally. The goal of the Fair Association's Board of Directors is to continue to ensure its existence and sustain it as an asset to our community. We also will be working to continue the support of the public and private sectors as we partner with you and future city councils and boards of supervisors to further the growth of our community. Thank you for your past support and your cooperation. We're looking forward to a brighter future for the North Iowa Fair Association, both as a location for the fair and as an event center.
Dennis has thought it all right there. We met a few weeks or months ago and worked hard together, and we have a good working relationship with the Fairgrounds. Mason Youth Hockey is a nonprofit organization all by volunteers, and this will help with our budgeting and also help us get out and have a lot of youth hockey players, high school players. And with our new North Iowa Bulls team coming in, we should have a lot of players out there using the facility, and hopefully a lot of people come out and watch all the different levels of hockey out there. Thank you very much, City and everybody.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Alright, well, now is the time for public forum, Mayor and City Council. Welcome comments from the public on agenda items only. You're asked to give the name, address, and item on the agenda, or topic you're referring to on the agenda. Please keep your comments concise in five minutes. Anyone notice that the clock is right about your opening sound?
Good evening. I'm Tom Willett from rural Mason City. I'm also the Business Manager for Labor's Local 340. I have just a question on Item 11 and 12, on the change orders with McKinnis and the number 12. I'd just like to know what, what are the details of that? What's the change order about? What is the additional cost? The change is to what?
Mr. Nelson, this isn't necessarily a question forum. When they get that item, someone wants to pull it, they'll have the opportunity to ask that. Do you have any comments regarding 11 and 12 besides that?
No, I'd like to know what the change order is. It's my experience in the past, there's no interaction once you get a roll. I thought this was the time to do it. When are we going to find out? How else do I find out the details of this? Or the public can hear it too, because I believe the general public, unless they have a construction background, doesn't really even understand what a change order is.
Sure. I think at the beginning of the meeting, I had announced that you can find the packet at masoncity.net on the right side, "Your Government," "Mayor/Council," and you should have the packet. It's all right.
So you're not going to address this?
This isn't, no, this is not an engagement. If you have any comments regarding that item, you're welcome to make them.
Well, just you'd be the thought that you forced me to. There seems to be an awful lot of change orders on the projects the city does. The game is to lowball the bid and make it up in change orders. You can't blame, does a kid say you don't blame the player, blame the game. That's the way the game is played. And I don't think the general public realizes. Maybe, and I'm not trying to insult the public, but if you don't have a construction background or you don't know about that, you may not even understand what a change order is. They're awarded these bids and being the low bidder, and then if it all ends up costing more because of whatever, and we don't get told what it is, we just write a check for the taxpayer's money. So apparently, I'm not going to get the answer here. I will play on the computer, correct? I don't know that that's going to give me the answers, but...
I think it's in the packet, sir. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
I'd like to say thank you, but I don't feel that way.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We'll read this first. Number two, minutes, regular minutes of June 21st, and special minutes of June 28th, 2011. Number three, claims dated June 23rd and 30th, 2011. Four, permits. Five, Administrator recommending approval resolution approving an encroachment permit for Mason Street Main Street, Mason City for use of public rideaway for Friday Night Live, July 15th, August 19th, and September 16th, 2011. Six, Administrator recommending approval flood 2008, resolution accepting warranty deed from 417 North Van Buren Avenue. Number seven, Administrator recommending approval resolution award contract Personal Decisions International of Minneapolis, Minnesota for police promotional testing services. December 8th, Administrator recommending approval resolution approving preliminary plan for Stone Pillar 17 subdivision. Nine, Administrator recommending approval resolution award contract to Tyler's Technology and Anken in Iowa for financial software and hardware upgrades. Ten, Administrator recommending approval resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $1.425 million geo bonds of the city of Mason City, state of Iowa, and providing for publication of notice thereof. Resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not to exceed $2.99 million geo refunding bonds of the city of Mason City, state of Iowa, providing for publication of notice thereof. Eleven, Administrator recommending approval resolution approving change order number two with McKinnis Excavating Inc. to extend the completion date in conjunction with the Federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Project. Twelve, Administrator recommending approval resolution approving amendment number one with RDG and Design of Des Moines, Iowa in conjunction with the Federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Project. Thirteen, Administrator recommending approval resolution authorizing approving of agreement between the city of Mason City, Righton Park Landlord LLC, Righton Park Master Tenant LLC, and HBI Partners LLC for parking components involving hotel guests. Number fourteen, Administrator recommending approval resolution supporting the creation of the North Iowa Area Council of Governments Local Housing Trust Fund. Fifteen, Administrator recommending approval resolution approving an encroachment permit for the candy bar, 1116 North Federal Avenue for use of the public rideaway, which is the plaza in North City Hall for an outdoor service area. Council, are there any items that you'd like to pull? Mr. Marsters, you want to go first?
I'll pull 11 and 12.
I'll save two of those.
Okay. Anybody else down here? Alright. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda to be approved, the exception of 11 and 12.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. We'll move on here to number 11. Mr. Marsters, do you have a motion?
Yeah, move approval, second.
Mr. Marsters?
Well, I just thought the least we could do is explain what the two agenda items are. Number 11 is to extend the completion date, so there's no money involved other than the time and the actual date of the completion. Mr. Trout, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right. Number 11 is to, with $38,000, excuse me, $38,615 change order and then extend the completion date. So it's a minor change order, and it consists of a number of different things, both positive and negative, that are happening with numbers relative to the whole area of the project. It's less than 1% of the project.
Okay.
But in here, it says previous change order, so I understand.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Trump, please.
Yeah, just to further clarify, the agenda item number 11 here is actually change order number two on the project. Change order number one is covered by agenda item number 18, which is an action item. As has been stated, change order number two has no cost implication with it. However, I would suggest that if you're really interested in agenda item number 18, you do go online and take a look at it. There are a lot of change orders. I've gone through the list. I don't have a problem with any of them. The total, and I don't even know how many there are, there's a lot, but the total is $38,615, which represents 1% of the project, which is pretty low. The project's been well managed up to this point in time, at least in terms of financially.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Anybody else? Alright, we're seeing now we have a motion and a second. Quick call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. Motion carries. Number 12 is a resolution approving amendment number one with RDG, Plan and Design of Des Moines, Iowa in conjunction with the Federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Project. Mr. Marsters, do you have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Mr. Marsters?
Once again, rather than try and explain it, I'll let Mr. Trout explain it. Feel well, Mr. Trout.
Thanks. We were approached by folks at the Righton Park about changing the, and adding some items that were accent lighting and so forth into the alley part of the project in order to mirror what was already being done on the streetscape. They came forward with the funds for another portion of the project that would allow us to reduce our costs there, which then makes it available for us to be able to do this, so there's no additional cost to the city for this.
Thank you. Anybody else on this item? Alright, well, we've got a motion and a second, so quick call roll?
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. Number 16, Administrator recommending approval of A, resolution adopting plan, specification of contract, and estimated cost for the Newman Catholic School, Middle High School, Music Suite, and Turnout Safe Room Project. B, bid tabulation. C, resolution award contract to Anken Construction Company, and that's in the amount of $975,020. D, resolution proofing contract and bond. Do we have a, oh, no, we've got public hearing on this. Now, if you have comments you'd like to make on this, we'll open the public hearing, and you'll have five minutes to respond on the sign-in.
My name is Melvin Harris, 1118 First Street Northwest, and I'm just wondering why we're building this for Newman High School.
No, we'll answer that as we go forward. We'll get, we'll answer as we, as it comes up.
School, public school. Mayors.
No, it's not, it's not public school, but the mayor's got a leash on all of us.
Mr. Weaver, then you are out of order, actually. No, this is the time for public comment. When we get into the, into the items, they'll be able to answer any of the questions that come forward of the public hearing, so.
Well, I'd like that you answer me.
That's not, Mr. Trout will do that when we get into the public hearing.
Will we pay your wages?
I should do it. This is a, 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 this[1231.12] And which is coming, payment is getting the money, passing it to the state, and the state is making decisions as to who will receive the money.
So it is started with everything, right?
If you want to connect all the dots all the way back, yes. Which is strictly for storm shelters to protect, uh, protect the children at different schools.
I understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
May I ask if you have a point of order?
Yeah.
I have no problem with what you just did, like you must try to explain that. But the problem is, we make exceptions here, there. I think it was the right thing to do, but I think we should have done that with the first gentleman.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that at all, but frankly, I find it to be somewhat of a quandary. At the same time, you know, it's a public forum has never been a forum to debate with people up at the table. You should get the questions out there, make your comments, and then they should be addressed.
I understand, I'm just asking.
In this case, it was a very, very, very simple.
Just asking that we be consistent with all I'm asking, Mayor.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I think if the public has a question, you should answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
You can go on the computer and look at any information. You boys should answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else? Alright, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to second to adopt resolution A, C, and D in exception to bid tab tabulation?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carver? Mr. Hickey?
Don't count.
Anybody else? Mr. Harris?
Well, I have a question. According to the memo in the packet, Ingle Construction, the low bid for this project, according to the resolution corrected tonight, if I'm reading it right, they are not the low bid anymore. There are two that are lower. So I question our whole process here.
Right, what we did was, they did the initial low bid, and then they, as far as the base bid, and then they made a decision to pursue the offensives that were part of their, uh, process.
Okay, so the low, they are truly the low?
They had a low bid, and then they made a decision to pursue.
Do you want to make a call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else on this? Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Quick call roll.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. Motion carries. Number seventeen, Administrator recommending approval ordinance amending the city code by repealing Title Nine, Chapter Four, Speed Regulation, Section One, Speed Restrictions, and adopting a new Section One. This is to increase the speed from twenty-five miles to thirty miles per hour at Fifteenth Street Southwest from Federal Avenue to Monroe Avenue. And this is on second. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
So yeah.
Alright, is there any discussion, Mr. Marsters?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Carver?
No.
Anybody else? Alright, we've got a motion and a second on second reading. Quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. That is passed on second reading. Eighteen, Administrator recommending approval non-budgeted Resolution Improvement Change Order Number One, Kinney's Excavating, Inc., Junction with the Federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Project. Is there a motion to second to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carver? Mr. Hickey? Anybody else? Mr. Marsters?
Well, I'd just like to clarify. This is actually the item in the consent agenda to make sure it's understood. This is the one that's costing money. The actual consent agenda was no change. This is the change order that's costing the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Willett, there's about fifty change orders. And you can have this copy. Oh, you already got a copy?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anybody else? Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Quick call roll.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Motion carries. Number nineteen, Administrator recommending approval, uh, non-budgeted, uh, Resolution Upper Subcontract Amendment Number Five, WHKS, Company for Construction Observation Administration Services Related to the Federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Project. Is there a motion to second to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carver? Mr. Hickey? Anybody else? Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, quick call roll.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, Council. Motion carries. Number twenty, Councilmember Weaver requesting approval to allow, uh, Mr. Kevin Hardy to provide a brief presentation regarding tree trimming as it relates to the Alliant Energy Franchise Agreement. Mr. Weaver, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I would, uh, move to allow Mr. Kevin Hardy to give a brief presentation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weaver?
Uh, well, I guess, uh, Mr. Hardy should give his brief presentation, I guess, and then I'll have some comments probably. I'll learn as we go too, I guess.
Mr. Weaver, the point of a motion is, do you make the motion, and it's an action, and then it would go, it's acted on, and goes before, uh, Council on Later Date?
Oh, it goes to, oh, what did he say?
It goes before Council on Later Date if that would happen.
I guess I'm, I'm lost. I was just, uh, what I put on here is, is, uh, uh, Mr. Hardy's been before City Council before amendment staff. And, uh, he came to me last week with, knowing the time was the essence for the franchise agreement between Alliant and the city. And I said, I would, uh, since we haven't had any follow-up, I would, uh, see that he has a spot to talk to the Council this evening. Do you want him to do that at a later date?
Then that's what the motion is, Mr. Weaver has.
Well, Mr. Hardy, maybe I meant, I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin, I must have screwed up. I thought you could have a brief presentation tonight, and then I sent in my packet for all of you to have it since last Friday. If Council concurs with Mr. Hardy's comments, I would then make a motion, we direct staff to work with Mr. Hardy and Alliant about the inappropriate verbage included in the franchise agreement. So I thought after Mr. Hardy could use his five minutes or explain to us what, uh, he's furious about and the damage to the trees, that maybe we would see fit to direct staff to work with, uh, within the franchise. I guess I'm not following you where you're at tonight. It, I, I, we've done this before, uh, many times, actually. So I don't know what we're, uh, what, uh, what, why I answer then. I, I guess, uh, I'm not familiar with your new rules. I mean, I mean, a motion to have Mr. Hardy give a presentation like that second. Well, then, maybe we should just vote on it and see how the Council feels. And if they don't want to have a presentation for five minutes, we don't have one.
He's the only...
Can I, can I ask a question, Mayor?
Alright, you concluded, sir? Alright, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Marsters?
Well, I would only ask if we amend the motion to have the presentation for tonight, now that we covered. We could just put a motion to have the meeting, I mean, have the presentation.
We can, uh...
I don't understand why we need to wait two weeks myself.
Where is the parliamentarian?
Mr. Steddon?
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, you can amend the motion.
Thank you.
Enjoy it this evening or not?
The Council votes for it, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll amend it to include the presentation tonight.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Marsters?
Done, thank you.
Mr. Hickey? Anybody else down here?
Looking forward to the five-minute presentation.
Alright, well, we've got a motion and a second. Quick call roll.
Marsters?
I have point of order. It is eight minutes for presentations normally applied. It's our procedure.
That's fine.
Okay.
Special presentation.
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
We have a non-scheduled presentation by Mr. Hardy.
Hello, my name is Kevin Hardy, and I'm an ICA certified arborist and running cutting-edge tree services in Mason City, Iowa. I reside at fourteen sixty East State Street. The reason I came here today is to speak about the upcoming rewriting of Alliant Energy Franchise Agreement. I've got a copy of their current IPL Alliant Clearance Education Plan. The education plan outlines, uh, Alliant Energy's specifications on how they are to conduct their business as far as, uh, performing Alliant Clearance procedures. A couple of the areas that I, uh, have an issue with, uh, are how, how the trimming is being performed. Different education plan outlines that the, that the trimming is to be completed in accordance with industry standards, as, uh, in accordance with the National Arborists Association and the International Society of Arboriculture, including proper pruning techniques. Uh, while, uh, while the line clearance was being done earlier this spring, I spoke with a couple of the line clearance supervisors and identified a couple of trees that, that weren't being pruned properly. And, uh, I never saw any follow-through. Every, uh, um, Alliant Energy is supposed to be doing, uh, work on it, or they audit and document all completed line clearance trimming on the distribution system. And any rework identified is supposed to be documented and assigned to be addressed by the contractor. And all circuits and identified rework, uh, is, is supposed to be re-inspected within twenty days to ensure that the, that deficiencies are corrected. And any additional deficiencies identified, uh, are supposed to follow the outlined procedures. And the contractor that originally did the work is supposed to be responsible for any, uh, costs associated with rework. I haven't seen any, uh, I haven't seen... I, I guess my, my question is, uh, is if, uh, if Alliant is, is, uh, doing the rework, and if they're following their procedures, and, uh, who is enforcing that the work audits are taking place? And, uh, and, uh, what is the city's involvement as far as making sure that Alliant is performing the line clearance in accordance with industry standards? Mayor, do you have any comments on?
Are you, my understanding is you're making a presentation, so I would expect you to have any answers on this, uh, before we go to... Are you asking questions now?
I was, I was gonna ask you a question. I, uh, I'm, uh, I'm really better at giving presentations based on if, uh, if someone asks me a direct question, I can, I can offer an answer. I'm not really good at, just, uh...
I think, yeah, and I think that the workshop format would probably be more appropriate for this. Are you clear with your presentation, then we'll be, someone can make a motion, and then we can ask a few questions.
Yep.
Okay, is there anybody that has a motion to include Mr. Hardy in the, in the Alliant Workshop as a presenter and a question to answer for Council?
I didn't know we were having an Alliant Workshop. I didn't know we were having a presentation.
I assume we're gonna have something during the franchise agreement. Is that correct, Mr. Tarnquist? Okay. Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Marsters?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Carver?
Um, I guess I have some questions. You bring up some good points. I, I might understand that the IP and Alliant Clearance Education Plan that's in the packet came from the current franchise agreement. That is my understanding. One of the problems that we may have now, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but the franchise agreement has expired, so I don't know if we can hold them to this line clearance education plan. However, the concerns that you re-raise, I mean, I'm an novice, I don't know anything about trimming trees, but they certainly seem valid, and it would seem appropriate as we work through the new franchise agreement, that we work with Mr. Hardy to identify the deficiencies and get them taken care of, and include, make sure we include language in the new franchise agreement that would protect us from, from future occurrences. But I, I, I think at this point, I would, what I would hope to see, you know, at some point in time, staff is gonna give us a franchise agreement, presumably in a workshop-type setting for us to review. And I think it would be appropriate at that point in time, you know, that'll be public information, we can certainly make a copy of that available to you. My hope would be is, would, as we sit down as a council and review this initial draft that staff presents to us, and hopefully you'll take some of these things into consideration in that initial draft, that we can have some dialogue as a council. Certainly, Alliant will be there, and hopefully you'll be there, Mr. Hardy. And that can be, uh, the next step as we move forward with a, a potential franchise.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Mr. Nelson?
I'm a little confused. I, you know, I, while Alliant Energy take care of the tree trimming, can I call on Bill Stangler? What is the city's role in trimming tree branches?
Go ahead and stand there, Mr. Tarnquist.
What is our role presently? Your supervision?
The city of Mason City has no role in trimming Alliant, Alliant's trees. Alliant hires their own private contractors. And they brought in probably ten to twelve groups of, uh, tree trimmers to trim around their voltage line. Their, their responsibility is to trim along their secondary and their primary lines as they see fit. And we have, we have no involvement with the way that they trim the trees.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else down here? Mr. Hickey?
I couldn't get up that easy, yeah. Now, with your experience and your staff that we have currently on the street department, uh, with the arborist department, do we monitor a little, are we able to monitor a little bit of what Alliant does as far as trimming? If they're not following certain...
Yeah, we want, we, we monitor what they do, and we were extremely disappointed in some of the trees that they left standing this year, the harshness of the way they trimmed them. Uh, we've had a discussion with them. I had a discussion with them personally that they should have just went ahead and taken the tree down. Alliant trims essentially different than the city of Mason City. The city of Mason City strictly trims for sidewalk clearance and street camping clearance and sign visibility. And we do not have people that work around high voltage, uh, service lines like the Alliant people are trying to do. We have to at times do that in order to get some trees down and stuff like that. But normally what we do is proceed with having Alliant come in and disconnect the, the wires so that we can, uh, de-energize the circuit and do what we need to do. In general, I mean, it's, it's, it's a catch twenty-two because it's a private contractor working with Alliant, and I don't know where the city's jurisdiction lies in telling a private contractor who's working for somebody else what they can and can't do. So you might want to clearly define exactly where you want that to go, because when it comes down to the pipe, I don't know that when they're trimming for line clearance and, and the public, such as the public in Clear Lake and, and other places, just lost their power. They're trying to provide a service so that when the wind blows at a high, uh, high level, that they don't have branches snapping into the trees and shutting off the power and, and breaking the power. I happen to have just recently experienced that twice on the secondary line at my own personal property. And they came through and trimmed. Do I think it was too harsh? Yeah. Do I understand why they did it? Because they're just like we are. When we go through and trim an area, we try to shape it the best we can. And in all likelihood, with the service area they have and the, the volume of trees that they have to deal with, they're not gonna be back for three to five years, so, you know, you have to kind of balance out what they're doing. I mean, there's some trees that, in my opinion, I've talked to them about that should have been taken down because they were to the point where there's nothing left standing.
And no disrespect to you, Mr. Hardy, but would we be able to utilize staff if there is issues with trimming? We could come to you as far as, uh, if there were workshop, address those issues and concerns that we have with Alliant?
To me?
Yes.
Yeah, I communicate with Alliant pretty much three, four days a week on, on multiple things, whether it be gas or whether it be, be trees. I'm not against having some reasonable language in the tree ordinance that requires them to follow what they're doing. But I mean, when you get twelve crews in town that are trying to accomplish something to move to the next town because of tornadoes in Missouri or whatever their service area is, they're, they're gonna move. They're gonna have to make money, and they're gonna move, so you just need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? Mr. Weaver?
Well, thank you, Bill. You said a mouthful. You know what? If, if I knew that you were gonna say that much, I would have had you give the presentation. I guess the, I guess the rest of you kind of know what I know now, the harshness of what happened. I think they had twenty-two teams in town here. If you've been on the council any length of time, you know that we get tons of phone calls and complaints about the trees and what happens to them, and you've all seen the trees and how butchered they look. Everybody's seen that. And more importantly, those trees are what help, uh, the rest of us live a good life on this earth. So it is a concern to all of yours. If you read the last paragraph while I sit here, I didn't really put this on here to debate with anybody or have an issue. I'm trying to help the citizens of Mason City. Quite frankly, Mr. Hardy came to me, and I said, "I'll try to help you." Isn't that what we do? My last paragraph here says, "If Council concurs with Mr. Hardy's comments, or Bill Stangler's comments, I would then make a motion that we direct staff to work with Mr. Hardy and Alliant and develop inappropriate verbage should be included in the franchise agreement." Is that so difficult? I, I don't understand why, why we got so hung up here on whether you could give a two-minute, actually, you gave like a two-minute presentation. I appreciate you stepping forward because it's always difficult for anybody to step forward and go against a, a large company like Alliant. But the bottom line is, those trees, if they're trimming, we own them. The city owns them. They're on city property, the right of way. They, they don't really go into people's yards and, and their property and trim. Alliant doesn't unless there's a power outage or something else happens. But they go down our right of way. That's basically the city's R O W E right of way. We own those trees, so we certainly should have something to say to it, and I hope you guys aren't scared off because Mr. Weaver brought it up tonight. And, 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 uh, see the greatness in what Mr. Hardy has to say and your own Bill Stangler has been on the job for over thirty years. So I hope we, we do do that. I hope we do include it. I hope we remember what we said tonight, and we do have a workshop that, uh, Mr. Hardy and, uh, Mr. Stangler's words will be taken to heart when we draw, draw up those two or three pages in the franchise agreement that takes care of the trimming that's been going on. I agree with Mr. Stangler and Mr. Hardy. I think Mr. Hardy's comments in your packet, he starts out with, "He's furious." I think you just heard from staff that he thinks, "Is it harsh? Have they left some trees that should be down?" Well, then that ought to be some direction to you that, uh, there's an issue here. I don't put these things on council packets because it's just fluff. It's, we need help in this community. The trees aren't getting, uh, getting any better looking as, uh, what, what's happening. And I appreciate you bringing your business back to Mason City and, uh, doing what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Marsters? My apologies.
Okay. Question and a comment. First of all, a question. Do we have a certified arborist from the city staff? Okay, so that answers one thing. You're a certified arborist, so the city has a resource, and if I'm hearing you right, you're willing to participate in us, you know, doing this franchise agreement. And my point is this, if we have language in the franchise agreement as to procedures for trimming trees that quote the arborist procedures, then we ought to have somebody who's an arborist read them and make sure that it's adequate. So, I mean, it makes sense that he's involved, since we don't have a certified arborist. I think the city does a great job, don't get me wrong, Bill. They do a much better job trimming trees than Alliant does, but it only makes sense to have somebody who's a professional, certified professional look at the language before we approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Anybody else? Alright, I'm saying now we have a motion and a second. You gonna read the motion?
I was to include Mr. Hardy when the council discusses this at a work session of the Alliant Energy.
You got a motion and a second? Quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, Council. Number twenty-one.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Number twenty-one, Councilmember Hickey, requesting approval to direct staff to research lawyering issues related bridges, uh, overpasses, and underpasses. Mr. Hickey, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve, please.
Is there a second?
So yeah.
Mr. Hickey?
Well, I've had a couple of issues on the twelfth street northwest overpass. Um, one was a couple of months ago, where we had a gentleman who was, uh, standing underneath the overpass. Had a citizen on the south side of the overpass columning. They'd already called the police department. They were unable to resolve the issue because he didn't want to leave. Um, there's no ordinance in place to handle this type of situation. The gentleman, of course, didn't have restroom facilities. Um, he didn't have water or food. He helped himself to some of the neighbor's pickets, uh, to get, obtain some water, which his family had young children, which concerned them quite a bit, needless to say. I had another lady, uh, that was right on the north side of the overpass, who's also observed. We've contacted the police department. Uh, they have no avenue as far as vacancy or lawyering to move these people on. We've offered them, use the shelter, the homeless shelter. Uh, if they don't use it, we can't force them to use it. So, um, after talking to staff, the chief, uh, Mr. Trout, um, I'm directing staff to address these issues and bring them back to Council. We'll hear your time. Thank you.
And you, Mr. Hickey? Anybody else? Mr. Marsters?
Well, I guess my only issue is not necessarily not supporting this, but my problem is we should cover all areas with a policy, not just one, because if we drive them out of one place, all we do is drive them to another place. So, it's kind of pointless, and we have more than one overpass and more than one bridge in this town. But, I mean, it needs to be citywide ordinance for lawyering if we're gonna do that, and we have people lawyering all around town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I, I, how many phone calls have, you mentioned a couple instances, just two phone calls you've had, or three incidents at the overpass?
I've had two separate instances in the last two months. One from, as I talked to you about Monica Doyle, and one was, uh, Damon Runkie on the south side, and which of these were yours?
I was trying to make this a question and answer, Mr. Hickey.
I didn't ask a question.
No, I just wondered too, uh, is it an ongoing issue with our police department? I don't know. I mean, I, this is the first, no, I have never getting calls on anybody hanging out around incidents at, uh, on the twelfth street overpass.
It gets, it gets drawn periodically, Councilman, and it's, it's not something that, um, typically, we can, we can solve the issue and it doesn't become a problem. Occasionally, though, there will be a person that isn't interested in the suggestions that, you know, they need to, uh, abide by common sense as far as they're hanging around different areas, and, you know, they need to move on to wherever their destination is. And so that's a hard thing, and it's a very difficult thing, is having discussions actually with the city attorney about this. And, you know, it's, it's an item that has been challenged at various times in court as to the lawyering laws and, uh, you know, personal property, or personal rights to be able to be on public property. And so it's a, it's a serious, uh, issue to individuals that live in the neighborhood that might have this occur. But it also is an issue that can be difficult to solve in appropriate, uh, in an appropriate law ordinance type situation.
Is there homeless people that live underneath that? I mean, are you aware of it?
Most of the time, it's transient individuals, people passing through town. They decide to stop off here, um, and that type of thing. So it's, it's not something, um, obviously, we have a shelter, and I think if you ask Joey, there's, there's, there's an issue, and there's, you know, a concern for that area, but, you know, we always, our police officers offer whatever assistance they can for those individuals if they need that kind of facility, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody down here? Mr. Carver?
I've had some dialogue with some citizens in Mason City too, and, and that has led me mostly to communication I had with the police chief. The first question I had is who has jurisdiction, like over the twelve, underneath the twelfth street overpasses, at the city or at the railroad? And the chief has responded to me that apparently we do have, we, being the city of Mason City, we do have jurisdiction under the overpass. So consideration of an ordinance may be a viable solution. The trick is to be sure that we craft an ordinance that will withstand court challenges and not infringe on people's constitutional freedoms. Obviously, this is a seasonal problem to the extent that it exists in Mason City. We're not gonna have this problem in January and February, at, at least not like climates to the south of us do. But given that we do have it periodically, and given that we do have some citizens that have expressed a concern, I think it, it does behoove us to at least have staff look into it. It may...
it. It may be that because of court challenges and constitutional freedoms, we can't change ordinance. But I would rather go through the process and prove that to ourselves rather than assuming. And then when this comes up again, again, next year, we will have addressed it. And it may be that this has gone, there's been enough change since this was last addressed that maybe we can execute meaningful changes to the ordinance and strengthen it. So I know that we haven't addressed this since I've been on the council, so I think it's certainly worthy of some further investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpus. Mr. Weaver, do you?
Well, you know, I guess I've been around too long. Of course, we have homeless people that are all over the community that aren't in the, in the preferred places we wanted to stay. I, I remember there was a campground behind Community Kitchen with several homeless men. They lived back there and they didn't want to be in the system and they went to the Community Kitchen to eat. We've had people in Parkers Woods living under the bridge there. We've had a tent set up right down here, you didn't even know it, for six months, a guy living in a tent right underneath the bridge, you go over to go to South Bridge Mall. And Parkers Woods is the favorite place. If that guy puts a fishing pole in his hands, you're not gonna move him at all, he's got the First Amendment right behind him. And that's what I'm afraid of, is that, is that, and it's true, when you, when you roust them out of where they're at, for the most part, they're staying out of your hair, they really are. It's very unusual to have anybody, any one of these guys, our women now, go up to a, somebody's home and get a drink of water. That might have been during that ninety-five degree temperature, I don't know. I've never heard that being done before, other than back in the thirties when they get off the train and they stay at the Dodge House that Mr. Hardy's restoring and they beg a sandwich for somebody. And people were riding the rods, the rails. But, yeah, we, people live in their cars in Mason City. And ten years ago or so, we had an issue where the same thing was brought to us. We wanted to do the lawyering thing and we wanted to stop people from living in their car. The one gentleman made everybody so uncomfortable that he was in his car and, and he'd move it every day and park in another place. And what we found out was, is that's the slippery slope we're talking about, Jeff, is that where does it stop? There's lawyering everywhere, whether it's teenagers or little kids anymore, or, and how do you cross that line on your First Amendment or your, the Constitution? So this is a slippery slope. I don't think two people complaining about makes it a great issue. I don't have any problem if you want staff to look into it, it's probably not, I'm not into banning or stopping or getting in those situations because it's just really, it's too much. They're there, they're out there and you guys don't want to know about it, but to me, they're under the bridge, we know where they're at. I know that, I know the police, many times I've had an issue with it, someone, they do check under the bridges to see if they're under there. And that's kind of a good thing to know, that's where they're at. It's kind of like bugs in your home. And I'm not comparing them to bugs, but they're there. And, and if you, you spray, they scatter. And that's what you're gonna do here. And I'm not sure you want them to scatter where you, where you want them, because Joy Ben's honor is sitting there, she knows full well that a lot of her clients or a lot of the people don't want to stay in the homeless shelters. They have some of them turn down free food, they don't even want food, they just want to be left alone. And it is like Mr. Tornquist says, it's a seasonal issue for the most part. I'm just not interested probably in following through with that or a curfew for that matter. And, and either it's the police department, they're not interested in a curfew in Mason City either, and for some general reasons close to what I'm saying to you. So I can, I can support if you want the staff to go look into this, but I probably wouldn't support it in the long run, but we're, I think we're, we're doing okay. Every town has those problems, Stanfield. We have in America.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Hickey?
I guess the main reason I brought these up was, was because this is an area where transient people that are helping the railroads tend to stay. And this, these neighborhoods here, the folks that are living in them are concerned about their personal property. The one lady's a single lady, the other one they have young kids and they don't know who these people are, they're not local, they're not really living in Mason City, they're here today, they're gone tomorrow. And they're just trying to take care of the neighborhood, provide for their family the best they can, so that's why I put it on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? All right, well, we've got a motion and a second. Could you read the motion?
Yeah.